We're now live. Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you for joining us at the Santa Rosa City School Board Meeting for a special school board meeting tonight. For December 15, 2021, the last school board meeting of 2021. And actually, my last one as president, so looking forward to supporting the next president. And we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And let's all say that together. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
By the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. It is time we are going to open this for public comment, and the public comment are on agenda items only tonight because this is a special board meeting. And Beth, would you please take that for us?
Sure. And is there a three-minute time limit?
Yes, three.
Okay. If there's anyone who would like to make public comment on agenda items only, please raise your hand. And Sheila Walker has raised her hand.
Hi, good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Trunell, and the staff in the community. First, I want to quickly thank all of you at the school district and all of our teachers and staff for keeping school open for our students in person. It has been, I know, a hard thing for you all, and we greatly appreciate it as parents. So we've got one more day of school, and then I hope everyone gets a deserved break. But as you prepare tonight to select leaders of the board this evening, I want to encourage you to think about selecting members or a member who is also a parent. I know that might be difficult just based on my observation of the board meetings and the Board of Education as a whole. I think we have two of seven that have parents of students currently in our district. I don't think there's any way for others to know what it's like to have students in a classroom or not in a classroom to really understand the impact of what happened last year and what is currently happening on our campuses as far as safety, emotional well-being of the students, and of course, the mental health crisis that we're going through at the same time as we have an academic crisis. Lastly, I know that you all know that my student is in middle school, and I would like to speak about what I'm learning as of the information. I hope that whoever is going to take over the leadership of the board as the president will understand what is going on and pay attention to we as parents because we're the best advocates for our children. Please do not cut hours, hours, four hours out of a week schedule out of a week's schedule for middle school students without conversing with us as parents. Our students in middle school right now had a reduction of almost four hours of instruction time. Today, I learned that in addition to that four hours that has been cut from them of a live in-person teacher instructing them, that minutes where kids are going and just sitting, playing, Googling, doing homework if they have any, it's basically self-guided. They're spending another 100 minutes. That's about five and a half hours that has been reduced from our middle school students. That's almost a full day a week. So whoever you select, whoever decides to run for any open seats in 2022, so if there are any community listening or any parents in particular, there will be three seats open, and I hope some parents will run. We need some more parents on this board, and we need whoever the new president is and the other officers to listen to us as parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you. And just a reminder that this is the only opportunity for public comment during this special board meeting tonight. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to comment on agenda items only? And there are no other hands raised.
All right, this meeting is for the annual organization of the board, and per ed code, it needs to be within this date. And so we are going to start with the election of the president, and it is the clerk who runs the election. And so I'm going to turn this over to Clerk Ever Flores tonight right now.
Thank you, President Fong, and thank you for your leadership for the last couple of years. I know these last couple of years have been very, very difficult for all of us. The, you know, ground level, teachers, parents, students, and at the leadership level too. And your leadership has guided us through very tumultuous times. I just want to make sure that we take a moment to recognize your leadership through these times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ever.
As Clerk of the Board, I'm responsible to open up the election for president. So at this moment, I'm looking for someone to be nominated for president of a school board. Do I have a nomination? I see Jill McCormick. Jill?
I would like to nominate Director Sheffield for president.
I'll second.
I second. Oh.
So thank you, Director Vice President McCormick. I think that was second by Allegria de La Cruz, right? And are there any other nominations for president of the school board? Here, none. Okay, before we do the roll call, Ed, do you accept the nomination for president? Because I know you.
Yes.
In last time, so I want to make sure you have a chance to talk about.
I accept that nomination.
Okay, good. All right, so all of those in favor say aye.
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 All those, any abstentions, actually? None? And so congratulations, Ed. You are the new president of the Santa Rosa City School Board.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ed. I do want to say that it is really such a pleasure serving on this board with all of you. And I don't think I can do this job without the support that we all give each other. It'd be too difficult to do it without it. So thank you for this honor, and I will do my best to dutifully represent our schools. Thank you so much.
And may I point out, you have children in the schools. So Ed, you are going to run the rest of the elections. Do you have that script?
Okay, I do. Okay, so I am going to run the rest of the elections. Okay, election of vice president. I'm now going to accept nominations for vice president. Are there any nominations? Yes, Director Fong?
I would like to nominate Jill McCormick as vice president.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Are there other nominations? Yes, Director Flores?
I would like to nominate Allegria de La Cruz, but I know she's already second, Jill's, so, but I'd like to nominate Allegria.
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there other nominations? Okay, so we have Director McCormick and Director De La Cruz. I will ask if either of you, do you wish to accept these nominations?
I accept.
I am not going to accept the nomination. Thank you very much, Clerk Flores.
Thank you, Director De La Cruz. All right, we have nomination of Director McCormick. All right, any other nominations? Okay, well, we have a motion and seconded. All those in favor of Director McCormick as vice president, say aye.
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 Are there any oppositions or abstentions? All right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
McCormick.
Thank you. I don't even have to change my name. Look at that.
All right, moving on to the election of the clerk, now going to accept nominations for clerk of the board. Are there any nominations? Any nominations? I see Director Flores' hand raised.
I'd like to nominate Director Manieri for clerk of the board.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and second. Are there any other nominations for clerk of the board? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and seconded for Director Manieri as clerk of the board. All those in favor say aye.
Let's check.
Let's see if she accepts the nominee. Sure.
Just for a point of order, I have been clerk before. Does that affect anything?
No, you're seasoned. You've done this before.
I accept the nomination.
All right, great. Thank you. Now, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppositions or abstentions? No, great. Motion carries. Congratulations, Clerk Manieri. Okay, moving on to the next item, 3D appointment of superintendent as secretary to the board. So I think we're seeking a motion for Superintendent Trunell to assume the role as secretary of the board.
I'll move to appoint Superintendent Trunell as secretary of the board.
All right.
Second.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Director Medina, seconded by Director De La Cruz. Well, I don't know if we need to, if we need to ask you if you accept this role. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposition or extension? Seeing none, motion carries. Yay! And that, okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3E, Special Presentation for Board President Fong. And.
President Sheffield, I'd be happy to jump in here if you'd like.
Thank you so much.
Okay. How do you feel? I just called you President Sheffield.
That's good.
So if former President Fong could please bring out her gift that she has received, just so that everyone can see. On behalf of our board, our staff, our students, our families and community, or former Board President Fong, we want to take this opportunity to thank you immensely for your service, both in prior years and now, having served as board president for multiple terms. We cannot thank you enough for how you've led us and led this board and our district and provided guidance and leadership, especially during a pandemic, and I know that we're still in one. So the actual gavel, which I have right here, is going to be passed to President Sheffield to be able to continue the work of the district. So I'm going to open it up now to anyone on the board who would like to say a few words in recognition of former Board President Fong.
Go. So Lori, thank you so much for just leading during the craziest time in public education. I don't know what we would have done without your leadership and you grounding us, going into these difficult and challenging meetings, keeping your head when faced with adversity, always being professional, polite, inclusive, and just a calming presence on the board and in our meetings. I'm always so impressed how you address people with respect, that you listen, you consider. You've been a teacher of mine, a colleague of mine, a mentor of mine for years, and to serve with you on this board and watch you just rise to the occasion as a leader has just been an honor, and I cannot thank you enough for what you have given to us, this board, this district, this community, with your leadership. So thank you, and I know you're going to keep doing that. So thank you so much, though, for your specific time as the board president here with us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
President Sheffield, how about you?
Sure. Lori, we came in this together. And the last few years, you've been our leader and our chieftain and our captain as we've navigated this vessel through some pretty turbulent waters. And despite pretty extreme challenges, you held us together and you kept our ship afloat. And, you know, the pandemic alone has, without a doubt, disrupted every aspect of our school community and our day-to-day lives, including the abrupt shift to distance learning, the transition to hybrid instruction, and the safe return to school last fall. And all of this came with stresses felt by parents and families and everybody at the district office and all of us, and especially on our students. And you guided us through some pretty difficult decisions that required exacting and necessary and sometimes really painful policymaking. We have returned to some resemblance of normalcy, and as a parent, I can say I'm grateful for this. I just, I want to thank you for your strength and for your dedication and your insight and your thoughtfulness and compassion and for your honorable commitment to public service. Thank you so much.
You guys, I'm still on the board. Thank you, Ed. That was very sweet. Thank you.
Director Medina.
Thank you. Director Fong, I want to say thank you for your services, President, for your constant and dedicated responses to all our parents and those that write to us. You've done a very good job. But you came to us and you come to us as an educator with many years of experience, but I've constantly been impressed how you always are learning, and you're always learning more and more and reading and about all the different issues that we face, and that's always impressed me. So thank you for all the hard work that you did as president to make us as a board much better. Thank you.
Thanks, Omar. Means a lot.
Director De La Cruz. Former President Fong, I know you're going to be here for the long run with us, so I will try really hard not to make this sound like a eulogy of your time on the board. No, I am so grateful for your, the way that your identity as a lifelong learner and somebody who has deeply committed to justice in education shines through the way that you lead and the way that you engage with each of us and with all of our constituents with such love and such high standards. And it's that combination of love and excellence that I just am so grateful to you for making sure that kids and staff and teachers and leaders and us as your board colleagues. You know, you set a high bar, and I'm always grateful for you for doing that because it makes things possible that I don't think otherwise we would have been able to do without your consistently setting that standard for our district and making sure that we all work with you to hit. I'm so grateful for you, and I'm so grateful that you're not going anywhere. You're just going to play a different role. So thank you, thank you. And I hope that you feel all of the love and the excellence flowing right back at you in this moment because it's just a reflection of who you are for us and for this district. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll treasure that.
And our student board member, Georgia, also shares, "I would just like to say that the support President Fong showed me when joining this board as a student was very important to me. She has made me feel very welcome, and I admire her dedication to this school board. She is an inspiration."
Any other?
Sorry, any other comments from the board? Director Manieri.
I just want to join in on the love and just express my thanks to you, Lori. I have learned so much about you as a person and as a leader in the last couple of years, and you're truly an inspiration. And I feel so lucky that I get to sit on this board with you and just learn from from this amazing mindset and lens that you see the world through. And I really look to you when I'm going through a difficult time or like I'm trying to process something. I do put my, I try to put myself in your shoes and I kind of question, and I think, you know, how would Lori go about this? I see you as a mentor, even if we haven't had too much time to really embrace that relationship. But I just kind of want to share that I definitely see you as a mentor and someone that I look up to. And I'm just excited to keep serving on this board with you, and I thank you for all of the hard work, all of the emails, all of the time that you spent making sure that you were serving this district in the best way possible and representing this board and this district in the way that you have. So I just, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Stephanie. That was awesome.
Director Flores.
I won't take too much time since I already spoke, but I just want to say thank you, Director Fong and former President Fong. When I came onto the board, you met with me over at Grossens, right, and you made me feel welcomed. And I just, that, you know, that doesn't go unnoticed, and I just want to say thank you for making me feel part of a new body of of a new body here. So I just want to say, you know, that I was taken in, you know, by this group. And then Lori, you took the lead on that, and you asked me if I had any questions, and you've been very, very open, even with the hard questions that I've been asking, you know, throughout, you know, your tenure. And I just want to say I appreciate your honesty and transparency that you've shown us. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve, and you guys are an amazing board. I, you know, at the CSBA conference and in getting to speak to a lot more different board presidents and boards in my work, also as the API Caucus Person Association School Board. I'm so glad we're on this board together. So glad I'm on this board and we're doing extraordinary work, not to pat ourselves on the back at all because, you know, we don't always get things right, and we're just continuing to learn. But I love the perspectives, strong, strong perspectives that each of you bring to our job together. And all of that together is like 360 degrees to support our district, our teachers, staff, administration, classified everybody, and our new superintendent. So, you know, we're just, and I always say, we just do this together. We do it by walking together. We have to do it collaboratively. And I see that all the time, and we welcome everybody's feedback, you know, good, bad, ugly, as long as it's not indifferent. Because, you know, we need those voices, and we need to continue to hear those voices so we can make our best decision. So yes, it's been a learning opportunity and a privilege. So thank you for your trust, and I'll get to keep raising my hand now to like get called on all the time. Look out, Ed.
And I would just like to add, yielding to the board first, that Director Fong, it has been a pleasure working with you as an incoming superintendent and the ability to work with you each week and also learn from you and your leadership. It's been an honor working with you in your capacity as president, and I look forward to working with new President Sheffield as we move forward.
Thank you, everyone.
Yay, Director Fong.
Yay, President Sheffield.
All right, moving on through the agenda, Agenda Item Number Four. This is an action item, adoption of the 2022 board meeting calendar. Superintendent Trunell, are we presenting the calendar right now?
Thank you, President Sheffield. So what we've tried to do here, just to make a note, is in light of keeping in alignment with ed code about when the organizational meeting should take place, we did ensure that the December date for 2022 is in alignment with that so that we wouldn't have to hold a special board meeting like we are tonight. And with that, I will hand it back to you.
All right. Well, this is an action item, but first, do we have questions or discussion from the board? We have Director Medina.
I was just going to make a motion.
Sure, great.
I'd like to move that we adopt the 2022 calendar as present.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Director Medina, seconded by Director McCormick. We'll take a vote.
Director Beard. Thank you. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Five, another action item. This is a CSBA delegate nomination, so we have one more election tonight. The 2022-2024 Delegate Assembly Position to Represent Us for California School Boards Association. I don't know if we have anything to say other than that members of the Delegate Assembly are elected or appointed by local board members in the 21 geographic regions throughout the state.
I nominate Ever Flores, Director Flores.
I second.
Great. Do we have other nominations?
Point of order.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, is there a calendar that is available and like, is it on the packet? See here.
You know, I looked in the packet. I don't know if I saw a calendar.
Right, no, I don't remember seeing that. Okay, all right, so that's it. I'll take a look at it later. Thank you.
If I may, the packet does describe the required Delegate Assembly meetings. So May 21 and 22, and November 29 and 30
Right.
as a part of the obligation.
Thank you.
Director Vice President McCormick.
I'd like to nominate Director Fong.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have. All right, so we have um motion, uh, we have motion and second for Director Fong. Do we have other nominations? All right, well now let's um go to the directors, um if they accept these nominations. Director Flores, do you accept the nomination? Director Fong, do you accept the nomination?
What did Director Flores say?
Yes, I'll accept the nomination. Thank you.
I am going to not accept it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fong. Okay, do we have other nominations? All right, we have it moved and seconded to nominate Director Flores. For the uh delegate assembly position um for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstention? Okay, great. Motion carries. Congratulations, Director Flores.
And I, uh, thank you for your vote of confidence, um Director De La Cruz and Director Manieri. Okay.
And so following the completion of the necessary paperwork which we all have, um you are our new CSBA delegate assembly representative. Yay. All right, we're moving on the agenda. Oh, yes, Director Fong.
So President Sheffield, there need, so we nominate as a board, we nominate and then there's a general election in our region. So our nomination will be considered an election. So in a few months, we will be voting.
Okay, do you know, and I, I know it's in the paperwork too. I saw the, the time, it's
So, uh, Trustee Flores, you're gonna need to get that paperwork in by January seventh. And um Adina has all that work.
We will work with him on that.
Yeah, and it's, it was attached um for all of us as well, I believe. Thank you, um Director Fong. Any other questions before we move on? All right, moving on to B, discussion action items. Number one, um action item, public board meeting via teleconference per AB three sixty-one. Um Superintendent Trinell, turn it over to you um for an overview.
Thank you. So we are bringing this item back even though we did this last week because we have to do this every thirty days. And with the board calendar just being approved for our next feeding, meeting being January twelfth, um, we would have been over the number of thirty days had we only left it to last week. So that's why we're bringing it back tonight. Um, and I will just share with the board and publicly that we are able to return um to City Hall, however. Um, they are still holding social distancing protocols and so therefore uh they're only allowing up to and no more than seventeen audience members that are spread out in the auditorium there. And anyone who is wanting to make public comment would have to line up outdoors because they're not allowing for a congregation of people in the upper level of the chambers to wait to make public comment. Um, and so uh with that in all considering, um this item is requesting the board to consider the extension of our board meetings in a virtual uh format. And I hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you Superintendent Trinell. Um, looks like trustee Medina has his hand raised.
I'd like to move that we continue to conduct the public meetings virtually as specified in Assembly Bill three sixty-one.
All right, second, uh moved by trustee Medina, seconded by trustee Fong. I do see trustee Flores's hand raised as well as trustee uh De La Cruz.
Um, yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, in the last couple of, you know, meetings, I, I voted no on this item. I, and, you know, I just wanna make sure and, and make it clear as to why I'm voting no. Um, I, I think it's important for us to, to mirror what's happening in our communities. Uh, you know, our schools are open, our students are back, our teachers are back. Um, you know, we're all in full, in full force back, back, back in the school settings. Uh, we don't necessarily have to use the uh the city hall um as, as a venue. We have other venues throughout our, you know, um district that we could use. I've, you know, I know we, other districts have done that in the past. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, uh, if we move that way, that we use a hybrid sort of model so that the people that are used to use Zoom are able to access um uh the meetings that we have. But I think it's important that as, as a board, we, we, we start uh becoming more sort of available in person, right? Uh, in, in terms of these meetings. Uh, and, and this is why I've been voting no for, you know, for the last couple of times. I was hesitant the first time I voted yes, cuz you know, I, I think it's important for, for us to have access to, to our constituency. So, um and that is my statement for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores. Uh, trustee De La Cruz.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we just had some discussion. Um, we received a few comments for people wanting to come back in person. And um my sense is that, and I wondered if we had any metrics on this, is that we've actually had much greater participation since we've gone to Zoom and that it actually makes it more possible for people to participate. Um, but I did also, you know, I, I am also thinking about the fact that we um, we are back as an institution in person and we have protocols that are intended to keep people safe and um, and you know, we're, we're doing our best to do that. Um, there are big huge holes called human beings in those systems sometimes. Um, but you know, as an institution, I do wanna just kind of raise the question about whether or not, um, you know, we as a board feel like it sends us particular message about our, our need to stay kind of on Zoom as the rest of our institution goes back in person. Um, and like I said, I'd like, as, as I started with, right? I actually, I believe that we've had significantly increased participation on Zoom. Um, so there's a, there feels like it's a funny balance there. Um, and if we do go in person, I do support um this idea of hybrid, given that there is such a very limited number of people that are allowed in City Hall and given the inclement weather that we have experienced recently, it would be really tough for people to line up outside and wait in the night, um and in the cold and in the rain to give public comment on a night like tonight, for example. Um, but I did think it was a good thing for us to just discuss as a leadership body, um before we take this vote and and to just make sure that we have a moment to reflect together.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. Um, trustee Medina.
I think I, I go with trustee De La Cruz said, and I'd also like to ask that if maybe as we proceed in the future, um assuming that this vote continues and passes, that we could maybe start looking at the data to like, look at maybe if we return to in person. Um, maybe how can we change what in person looks like where we incorporate some of this that allows for much greater involvement, which I think is really important to engage parents as well. And also just in terms of now, I think there's a lot um change potentially with the Omicron barrier that I think we also gotta be careful with what's going on with that because I mean, from what I'm reading, it's, it's, it's not looking good.
Thank you, trustee Medina. Trustee Manieri.
Yeah, thank you, um Directors Flores and De La Cruz for kind of starting the conversation. I think in the past, we've kind of rushed through this item because of time and because our, we know our meetings can be really long, but now we have an opportunity to kind of spend some time talking about it. So I, I really appreciate it. Um, and I, I totally feel the same way that it's important to mirror what is going on in our community. Um, I think that like, at least my votes for yes the last few times has been, um you know, due to the fact that it doesn't seem like we can, that, that being in person is an option because our place of meeting is City Hall and there are some barriers there. Um, I, I wanted to kind of share that, I, cuz I just learned this about how city council, center of the city council conducts their meetings. Um, and, and I'm sure that, you know, some of this information is probably relevant to us and because we have staff reports and folks from cabinet that are at our meetings, um, they have a system where folks who are not reporting or giving reports, they're actually in a different room. And so that allows space for, uh, it maximizes space for community in the actual chambers. Um, and so just kind of, I think, learning about what they, what they're currently doing to make it work would be really helpful. Um, if we have access to their technology, then that would be really great cuz then that makes it accessible to the community. Um, I know I've joined into city council meetings um by, by Zoom. Um, and it's been really easy for me to engage that way. And so if we have access to the space and if we have access to the technology and if we can do what they're doing to make it work, um I'm, I'm just kind of wondering if it's a possibility for us to, to do the same in the near future. I would like for us to explore that.
Thank you, Director Manieri. Vice President McCormick.
Yeah, um, I also, I think we're all definitely feeling the pull to um get back to in person, especially since our schools are functioning in person. Um, but I think the venue is a major issue and um, I agree with Director Flores that I think our first step would need to be a hybrid. Um, if we do start meeting in person so that we allow access, we continue to maximize access safely um for our community uh to participate. But my concern is um that I really wanna make sure that if we're not at City Hall and we're using like a, one of our high school auditoriums or something like that, that we actually have the capability to pull off that hybrid situation um effectively. So I, I would just, um, it would be important for me to take that next step, which is I, I think would be ideal, um not just in light of COVID, but I think for the future hybrid would probably be good. Um, just allowing access all the, as much access as possible all the time. Um, but that, you know, do we have that support system? Do we have those resources? Do we have the technology set up for that? Um, I think all those things would need to be looked into. We need to report on that and we really would have to, um feel confident it would, it would go well. So, um, I just, I think it's worth looking, taking those steps and, um um, and as Superintendent Trinell, like, you know, finding out that information if we're not using City cuz I, at the moment, I don't think City Hall is the most ideal situation for us right now under the current restrictions. Um, but you know, possibly another venue could be, but do we have the support and the technology able for us to do that to actually run a hybrid in this situation? So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, um trustee Flores.
Um, thank you and President Sheffield. I appreciate that you're actually keeping track of who raised their heads, you know, in, in that order. So thank you. Point of order. And then a procedural sort of question, um how would this look like in terms of, if we vote this down, right? How would, how would this look like for our next meeting? Or do we have to uh vote? If we vote this down, will it happen for, you know, like at the end of January or beginning of February? Or when will this take effect? So, um, that was my procedural question. Thank you.
Would you like me to address that question?
Yeah, please Superintendent Trinell.
Okay, um, so if you were to vote this down tonight, then we would be meeting in person on January twelfth. Um, and uh that would either be at the direction of going to City Hall, at which point we would be working with City Hall to get all logistics in place um and get all of that ready for you. Um, or if you were to say that we needed to host this, say at a school site in district, um we would need time to test out the system. Um, there are concerns about audible. Um, at the, uh, the audible ability because you all would be on Zoom. And so there would be logistics and turning everyone's, you know, uh, sound off because otherwise you're reverberating all over the place. So we would need to have some time with some mock board members to test that out and see how we would get our systems um in order along with public comment um and a podium and such setup. It's not impossible. We would just need time to test it. Unfortunately, we have a two-week winter break. Uh, and so that's going to be a challenge. Uh, again, not impossible, but um I would suggest that we be given a little bit more time if that would be something the board would be willing to do.
Thank you Superintendent Trinell. Um, trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you, President Sheffield. That, that's really where my question was gonna go Superintendent Trinell was, you know, I feel like the majority of our energy should really be going to focus on educating our kids and making sure that we're communicating with constituents in the best way possible. And also, like, it is the humanistic thing to do, to do, to make sure that we have you know, rest time built in for all of these incredible leaders at the admin level who have just been working day and night, um since we've gone back. Superintendent Trinell, you didn't share with us, like, what day of school are we in today? So I, you know, I, I would be supportive of, you know, uh, putting this as a, as a place or a quest for information um that we could hear about, you know, what those efforts would look like in January when we're all back um at work and with some time to test out systems. Um, and then to have an opportunity to really do this thoughtfully um in, in a way that really is honest, also about our capacity, right? Um, if taking, if going back in person is gonna take away significant amounts of administrative um time to get this set up, um and take away from educating our kids and making sure that they're safe in those schools. Um, then it feels like it's not a good use of our resources. And so I'd really love to hear that in a very honest way from you Superintendent. I always appreciate your unvarnished responses to our questions that can be hard sometimes. And so you know, just really wanting to make sure that we open up space for you to, to share with us about what that would actually, um you know, look like to set up in person or in some hybrid way. And how many people hours would it take to, to do this? Um, and then, given that there has been also increased levels of, you know, security needs, given um just the way these conversations are happening in public in our own communities. Um, I would also like for that to be included in the analysis of what, what is the level of security and safety that would needed to be included in order for us to be able to go back in person in a way that doesn't put anybody at risk, um including property that we choose to sit at. Um, so I would really appreciate that being included in the analysis as well.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. Um, these are all really, really good um uh points made in this discussion. I see your hand, Director Fong.
Just to pile on, you guys are all saying the exact same things I was thinking. I think we have to be very clear with the goals. What is it that, what are our goals? Let's be super clear on those goals and kind of rank order them. From access to in-person face-to-face meeting, which is important. Uh, to be, taking care of staff time as well. And security.
Yeah.
As, as the nation goes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Fong. Um, you know, uh, Director De La Cruz brought up a really good point, you know, maybe around we, we, a request for information, something that we can bring back to um a, a, um board meeting and have it even on the agenda. We have a very engaged um school community. Um, particularly since um we are in this um, this mode of, of communication virtually, having these meetings, it does make it more accessible. Um, so if this were something that we would bring back for further discussion, maybe when we have to reauthorize again um, um, in another month, we will be able to um, to continue this discussion to um actually engage our school community in the process. Um, so, um, I don't know if, uh, Director Fong, if your hand is still raised. No, okay, so we have a motion um for continuance of conducting public meetings virtually as specified in Assembly Bill um, uh, three sixty-one, AB three sixty-one. We had um, a motion from Director Medina. I believe it was seconded by Director De La Cruz. Um, call for a vote.
Director Beard. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
I, but I don't think I seconded it unless I'm wrong about what I just did. So I just want them, I want the minutes to reflect it.
So I just want them, I want the minutes to reflect it. I asked some clarifying questions after the motion was made.
Somebody seconded this.
President.
President Fong seconded it.
Thank you.
Clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
President Fong.
Hi.
Oh, sorry, Director Fong. Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Now.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, motion carries. Moving on to item number two, action item 2021, 22, First Interim Budget Report. The Rick and Joel Show. Deputy Superintendent Edson and Executive Director Dantos, I'm turning it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, President Sheffield, members of the board. Superintendent Trenell, I'll give you just a second for Joel to pop over before we get going. There it comes. Joining me tonight with the waving hand down in the bottom right corner on my screen is Executive Director Joel Dantos. We are going to give a short presentation that was included in the board packet with a couple of changes that will be noted on the respective slides. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions as we go through this. With that, I will share my screen. One second. Tonight, we are here to talk about the first interim for the 2021, 22 school year. A very familiar slide in all of our budget and interim report presentation showing everyone where we're at in the cycle. The call out in green is tonight. I will make note as we go through the cycle this year. I don't think there's anyone more anxious than school districts across California at what's going to happen with the release of the governor's budget proposal in January of 2022. With some of the, not only speculation based on some of the comments made by Governor Newsom, but also some of the chatter I will say that we picked up. I know that even down at CSBA, I know that probably most of you heard some positive or encouraging news about the state of the economy, especially pertaining to K-12 education and future funding. So, you know, we're, you know, about 25 days away from that information being released in first run. And I think Joel and I are both looking forward to that as a, hopefully as a New Year's present this year, rather than bad news that we've had in, in some previous years. We'll also be bringing in January our prior year audited actuals. Those are being completed right now with expectation that we will be getting them in the next couple of weeks, so we can bring them to the board for acceptance. And then subsequently submit those to the state as required by law. We'll then move quickly into March with second interim. And we'll talk a little bit about that tonight and the work that we're doing during first interim in preparation for second interim and the remainder of the school year, going into budget and LCAP adoption in June. The next big date on there is the May revise. We certainly, if you'll recall from last year, received an incredible amount of good news towards K-12 funding in the May revise that certainly changed our ability to do some of the things that we did as, as an organization in preparation for coming back to school this year in 21, 22. Budget adoption in June. And then going into the next fiscal year, we'll, we'll get back into the 45-day budget revision and then audited actuals until, you know, about one year from today. We'll be back here talking about a first interim report for the next fiscal year. As we've talked about before, both the first interim and second interim are requirements of ed code to be provided for a period of July 1 through October 31st for the first interim report. And then July 1 through January 31st for the second interim report. In the event that we are qualified at the second interim report, we would be required by ed code to submit a third interim report for our financial, financials through April 30th. It is our intent, I will share this, that we will, between the work that we will continue to do within our organization, the Budget Advisory Committee, our departments and sites, along with what we hope to be good news in January. We are aiming to be able to certify positive, if possible, for the March second interim report. Right now, as you can see, we can self-certify three different ways. Positive certification, qualified certification, or a negative declaration. We'll get to the numbers in a little bit, but we are going to ask that it is approved with a qualified certification tonight. Stating the district may not meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year or subsequent two years. And really, it's just the continuing work that we're doing through our organization to properly allocate and make decisions and choices that positively impact education as well as positively impact our budget. Going through this are some of the budget assumptions that we're using for first interim report. And really, the, the big numbers on here to look at is our district enrollment. Please note that this slide does not include charter schools. I just want to check, yeah, okay, does not include charter schools. You can see our MDPK pupil count, also our average daily attendance, which we're actually funded off of. And the average daily attendance will be using while still being, are still taking advantage of whole harmless provisions due to declining enrollment. On this slide, this continues with these assumptions. You can see this is an updated slide. We will include this in the minutes, but we did add 2018, 19, 19, 20, and 2021 as a historical perspective regarding, regarding this, so everyone can see that where we've been and at this point, what we're projecting going forward. We've also added this new slide. This information was in the board cover regarding our charter schools. We didn't want them left out. So we put the same information that we included for our Fund 01. And we also added the three previous years as well to the slide for everyone to have a reference point of where we've been in those schools. And you can also see some of the changes in those schools of note on this slide. CCLA of Cesar Chavez Language Academy, you know, went from 440 to 928. That was with the inclusion of the Cook Middle School students. And then you can see other schools in here where there has been a relatively sharp decline over the last few years, including the French American Charter, with significantly lower numbers than what was once there a few years ago on an average year. On this slide, the one thing that I want to point out is the COLA. These two numbers are the combined rows two and three. The first one is the 5.07 that was referred to as the Super Mega COLA, whatever it was deemed last year, when we received it for this year. The LAO recently came out with their expectation for COLA for 22, 23, 5.35%, which was significantly higher than the 2.48 that was previously used, as well as an increase in 23, 24, showing additional funds allocated to our local control funding formula and specifically around our Fund 01, but would also impact our charter schools as well. The two bottom ones, CalSTRS employer rate and the CalPERS employer rate. You can see a sharp uptick in CalPERS, especially between 21, 22, and 22, 23. This is some of the news that we're hoping with the California surplus that has been publicized, that government Newsom may choose to help school districts out with paying down some of these percentage increase as he's done in previous years. This slide, our budget assumptions that we used in first interim that have been part of the development of the Fiscal Stabilization Plan, Part 1 for 21, 22. On this page is strictly revenue enhancements. You can see the revision to our COLA estimates that we're using with the LAO's numbers, similar to what we did last year. We've included an increase in return of equity from RESIG as well as other areas that we feel that we may be able to garner additional revenue. I'm going to pause for a minute and ask Director De La Cruz her question, so we could do it in real time.
Thank you so much, Deputy Superintendent Edson. My, my question was around those kind of reductions and, and daily attendance. Do we know where those kids went? Do we know, do we know kind of the reasons why there's such, there's such a drop in particular schools? And is there a way to understand whether or not, you know, kids from, from Santa Rosa French American Charter School ended up at, right? Like, how do we explain some of those things? How do we learn from those, from that data?
In terms of decreased enrollments?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I, I don't have that with me today. I know there has been some, some, some of our people looking at where those students have gone, if we can track that, whether it's to a different school or leaving the area, right? A lot of our departures, even from our elementary schools, which have been greatly affected year over year with enrollment decline. A large number of them have left the county or the state when we look at what their exit codes are.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
On, on the second slide about budget assumptions for Fiscal Stabilization Plan Part 1, some of the items that we've talked about previously with the movement of some funds from general fund to SR funds. We still are looking at position reduction based on enrollment. We shared a couple of weeks ago and we're working on finalizing our P1 reporting for Calpads, where we'll be presenting additional information in the near future about our student loss, particularly at the elementary school sites. If you'll recall, our middle and high schools are just about at or exceeding projections at most all schools based on projections for this year. It's still important to note that those projections for this year and exceeding those projections are still lower than the projections we had pre-pandemic, right? So we're in a better spot than we thought we would be, but we're not in as good a spot as we were pre-March of 2020, going into the 2021 school year. So we're going through this process as well, but we use these as assumptions for first interim. Of course, with position reductions, that will be tied to projections which we're working on right now. There'll be work with human resources as well as ed services around master scheduling and all of that going into the next calendar year, which will be starting discussions with school sites starting in January. So through the assumptions, you can see the revenue enhancements and the expenditure reductions and estimated impact to our budget in the current year plus the two future years. I did want to talk for a moment about the Fiscal Stabilization Plan. We've been through this for the last several years. We are doing much the same this year, although taking a little different approach for first interim because of the complexity and going through things through departments, through school sites. We're using some assumptions, as you saw, the majority of those are revenue assumptions on things that we feel thoroughly secure about putting as assumptions as tangible things that can happen. The Budget Advisory Committee has met four or five times this fall looking at different items that have been brought forward with a lot of discussion and then being able to go back to the respective areas in the district and have further discussion. We're still working through this process internally with ed services, with business services, special services, all the services, as we prepare for additional meetings in January. Through February, we'll bring an actual fiscal stabilization plan for approval to the board, expected at the second meeting in February in order to incorporate all of those as a board-approved fiscal stabilization plan as part of the second interim report. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dantos to go through some of the numbers in the first interim.
Good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trenell, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to go through tonight. The first three slides will be the budget updates to the current year, to our general fund, which does not include charter funds or other special funds. I will, at the end of the presentation, go through those funds, financial condition at first interim. I'll go through these three slides and then I'll be open for questions. But I think if I get through the third slide, it might answer some questions. Then when I'm done with those three slides, I'll move on to the required multi-year projection, which will be this current year plus the two future years. So this financial report, like all financial reports, is compromised, comprised, comprised of revenues, expenditures, and then a resulting ending balance, which is our prior year ending balance with our current year revenues, less our current year's expenditures and a new updated ending balance. And there's some components of those balances that I'll go through. So like Rick mentioned, our current year is updated from when we adopted the budget. And if we recall, we had our public review the first week of June 2000, and then we actually adopted the budget at the end of June for July 1. But then before our first board meeting in June, we also had to put it on public display for a couple of weeks. We had to build it, so the budget adoption was kind of looking back in May. So it's really updated. And then it's for updates that have happened since then through October 31st. And, and, and so we'll start with looking at the revenues, the revenues. So again, this report, like all the reports, all of our financial reports, revenues and expenditures are recorded based on account codes that are prescribed by the state. And those account codes have similar components that allow us to roll up similar categories into summary numbers to help communicate a big budget into a few lines. So here is the slide on the revenues. And as you can see, revenues are broken into, up into LCFF sources, federal revenue sources, other state revenue sources, and other local revenue sources. They're broken up in that fashion because LCFF sources are the state's basic funding model. They're really, and, and each one of these funding sources has a purpose to fund expenditures. So their expenses are tied to these revenues. But the LCFF sources are our state-based funding. And the one component with the LCFF is the LCAP, which is our local control accountability plan for our foster youth, English learners, and poverty students. So those revenues are really targeted at those expenses. So just a little further breakdown of the LCAP revenues, those are our proper local property taxes. So just a little further breakdown of the LCFF revenues, those are our property, local property taxes, our EPA, and then if we if those together don't meet the minimum level of funding that's prescribed by the state, then the state funds the remaining amount to meet that minimum level requirement. That's considered state aid, which we are right now a state aid. A state aid school district. If your property tax exceeded the little minimum amount, you would get all the revenues, those property taxes, and you'd be considered basic aid, right, Rick? Basic aid, yeah. So as you can see, our LCFF sources, which like Rick said, were hold harmless this year, although we are projecting even a greater decline in enrollment from our budget adoption. I think it's of about hundred and twenty one kids. We still are whole in our revenues. We are increasing about fourteen thousand, and that's from prior year true ups when we have we have a number of ADA reports and they 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 look into that. So that that and also with the LCAP funding, but basically our funding for LCFF sources is flat because of that hold harmless. We move on to the federal revenue. As you can see with first interim, we have increased about one point four million dollars. That's a so so it's a federal grant. So all these federal revenues are very restrictive towards those federal expenses, expenditures, they want to see in conjunction with those revenues. So we did include in the budget with first interim, our school improvement, CSI funding, it's about one point four million dollars. We got that as part of the Every Student Succeeds Act. I think that's related to us and and our testing results, which we didn't take, I believe. So that is the that is the funding and and they're they're planning out those expenditures as we move on. So as you can see, other state revenues, which is so our state main funding is LCFF sources, but then our state also gives us other revenues for other special programs they want. And if you recall last spring, and we started rolling out the in-person instruction and expanded learning opportunities grant. We got a lot of that in plan last last spring as we were also building the budget. We adopted some plans and now we've got it updated in a person room and we've included about one point. No, I'm sorry, about two point four million updated in the budget for that, but you'll see the expenses kind of increased for that as well. And then some of this other local revenue, we we updated a lot of the fees and things that we get locally, but then there was also the fiscal stabilization plan measure. So you'll see an increase of about three hundred thousand. So total revenues increased about four point two million. So now I'll move on to the expenditures. You can see expenditures are a little, they're 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 rolled up into summaries, but they're not less broken into the specific restrictions. They're broken into like expense types. So you can see the certificate. So I'll just say one thing that did happen with our labor was, if you recall, last spring, we also finished settling our negotiations with what are considered unrepresented employees, management, supervisory. And we saw some changes in some some of those. So we did have a a budget update for those items. Then, like I said, we had expenditures with the other grants. So you're going to see some of these expense categories increased with those other grants offset by the revenues that come in. Then we had our, like Rick mentioned, we had in current year, we had a few fiscal stabilization plans that were included in here. We did have, so we also had at at between budget and October, this is we had a couple of updates with the LCAP. We we have a new LCAP this year. Then we also had a change in unemployment insurance. So we were able to reduce our unemployment insurance by that percentage. You can see that the net in employee benefits went down about six hundred eighty five thousand. Again, went up with some of those increases for unrepresented employees. And then we did have again, the in-person session, some of the COVID federal funding impacts to expenditure too. So although we see a seven point one million dollars increase in overall expenditures, I'm going to move on to the ending balance. And hopefully that'll clear up how the revenues and expenditures affect the bottom line. And then I'll be open for questions. You can see overall, the net increase and decrease, which is revenues less expenditures. We were originally budgeted for ten million dollar deficit. We've now moved in with first interim into a twelve point six million dollar deficit. I can tell you the two point six million is due to those some of those restricted grants. We updated some revenues and expenditures, and we were we're using the some of the reserves and the result in in the net increase due to find that of two point six is not the unrestricted LCFF funding sources. So and and as I move through those, hopefully this will clear it up. So our beginning fund balance, so this, some of these might jump out as fairly significant, but one component that is really important to acknowledge in this is between one thing that happened between budget and first interim was also the unotted actials. So if you recall, that the how we ended last year also affects the new ending balances because we changed prior year ending balances got updated with the unadded actials, which we created new ending balance for twenty twenty one, which created new beginning balances for twenty one, twenty two with first interim. So really, you can see we we end with twenty one million dollars as opposed to eight million dollars. So we're seeing an increase of twelve million dollars. And you're thinking, okay, how did we increase by twelve million dollars? You can see the overall increase to our restricted grants, which takes into consideration new revenues and then updating the COVID ending balances. You can see our new projection is about three million dollars in restricted grants. So out of the new twelve million dollars, about three million of that is going into a restricted grant. So it's not going towards our three percent reserve for economic uncertainty, and it's not going towards our unrestricted ending reserve. It's going back into a restricted reserve. So after you take the three point two million out of the twelve million, you were left with about nine point four million dollars. Because the net increase to expenditures is a little greater, we're going to have to our 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 three percent increases by about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that of the economic uncertainty. So after you get the three percent, we're left with nine point two nine million in totally unrestricted reserve after this current year. And if you recall, at second interim, and I'm sorry, no. At unadded actials, if you recall at unadded actials, because of the items that we did when we closed the books, we increased this unrestricted reserve by about eight point eight million dollars. So what's happening at first interim is we're seeing a net gain after all the items we talked about of about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand of that moves into the reserve economic uncertainty and the four hundred thousand of that is a net increase to our bottom line. So after all the fiscal stabilization measures only for this current year, all the updates, the revenues, all the updates, the expenditures, our net result throughout and also all the expenditures through October thirty first, our net but our net gain is four hundred is about four, a little over four hundred thousand dollars per current year. So a lot of moving parts, a lot of budget updates. That is the result of the current year first interim report update through October thirty first. So now I'll I'm open to questions for that. I'm going to move on to the multi-year projection, get into some more of these numbers, go on to. But if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Looks like Director Flores has his hand raised.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Director Dantas. Where is this? In books and supplies, I saw a delta or a difference of five point three million, I think it was. There it is. So we went from two point nine to eight point two million dollars in expenditures here. So could you talk a little bit as to what, why the big difference, you know?
That's a great one. That's one that jumps out. So so with the roughly four point two five million in increased revenue grants, there was a good amount of books and supplies that were also increased and budgeted related to those grants. There were also some COVID updates that we had through the through the summer and and fall. And we also updated our So let me see something. So, okay. Books and supplies. Yeah. So so another thing we did was we updated our lottery sixty three hundred with the we had a, we did have a instructional materials. What do they call those again? I'm sorry.
Are we adopting?
Adoption, but yes. So there was also an adoption in there, but that was using the sixty three hundred lottery for restricted, restricted for instructional materials.
Okay, so we were not foreseeing the this new adoption because I think this is something.
What we did, but we updated the budgets to show the increased revenues, six three hundred and the increased expenditures for those instructional materials. So it's it's kind of a the way the budget works, we didn't show a reduction to our ending reserve, but we were we just captured those updates through the last late, late spring, summer and fall. So you're seeing not a hit to the bottom line, but you're seeing that update with first interim, some of it, because I think it was like, I think we had like, I want to say, like close to a million, and then it just updated a little over a million. So it wasn't a full, that's not, I wouldn't say the majority of it is like, it's not like the entire five point three million, but that is a contributing factor. And I can get a a list to show kind of all the items, but for this presentation.
So just so you know, I I could be wrong, but I mean, last December, I remember looking at the same budget item and they went from like seven million to like what it is now to like two point nine million. So it was a drastic sort of difference right from seventy two. And then in the three-year projection, if I remember correctly, it was budgeted to like, you know, two and a half to two, two, two point nine million dollars every year. Now, having this, you know, here first interim, it's 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 a big surprise for me because we were not informed that there was this huge adoption. And I did ask specifically, you know, as to why we dropped from seven to two. And then are we not expecting to do any sort of big adoptions in the foreseeable future? And I was informed that we weren't going to have that. So I'm just taking a little bit of back right now that now we are sounds like we are adopting new material, which is fine. It's part of, you know, doing business with schools. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the these sort of information, it's it's clear when it's presented here in terms of what, you know, these items will see in the future because right now, I mean, looking at Delta five million dollars, it's it's quite alarming. And then two, are we able to move any of the S R funds to to meet any of these sort of categories? Or use any of these one-time fundings to to pay for an adoption or to pay i- if we had to buy new Chromebooks, you know, due to, you know, COVID nineteen? I'm assuming that's why, you know, our money, our books and supplies also went up. Are we using, we're shifting any of the S R funding to defray some of the expenditures under this category?
Yeah, all great points. And I certainly don't want to, I think I might have overstated or overemphasized the instruction because it was a small percentage of the five point three million. I I can give you, so I maybe I I just was throwing out things that that contributed to it. So it was just an update out of through October thirty first for the adoption. It was just we had a budget and then we had the actuals. Now we updated it. So there was a lot of other updates. And when I get into multi-year projection, I'm I'm going to show you one thing that also contributed to these updated expenditures. Because because a a good amount of this is also due. So and 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 this is unlike any really budget condition we've been in because we've been getting these grants that come in and we we get revenues, then we then we book plans like we updated SO three plan, we updated the expanding learning opportunities grant plan, all these in conjunction with the budget and current year, we have to put these in our financial systems and update the budget. And I don't, I don't think you know, all that got captured. So let me, hey, Rick, can you just run to the NYPD real quick? You see this in two thousand twenty two, twenty three, where it says federal COVID pandemic great, great grants revenue of twenty twenty million, twenty million, two seventy one.
Right, right.
So that's updated too. And I think the last rendition we saw, at least that I worked on, I don't know if it was I think it might have gone to the Budget Advisory Committee, but it was like that was thirty three million. So now that's reduced to well, it's actually the one above it or the one below it. They're both the same. So that's just what we have left in federal revenue is twenty million. What happened with the other? What happened since the last rendition of thirty three million? Well, we we moved that out of this because we booked those in current year expenditures, which is that five point three million, all those going up. And then now this has gone down. And then we also have moved some of this into that three point two nine restricted reserve because we because we recorded the state revenues. Now we're just looking at the federal revenue because we can't record the federal revenue until we spend it because there's a little difference between the federal, the state revenue allows us a ending balance where the federal revenue hat, we have to earn it and then we can book the revenue. So I certainly appreciate your your concern about us not correctly budgeting instructional materials, but I didn't mean to say that we, I'm just meant to say through October thirty first, the budget became the true purchase. And now we updated that with first term. That was something in that five, but the majority of it is for the in-person instruction grant, the ELO grant, the ELO grant, and some of the other grants that we identified those expenditures moving into that books and supplies category this year through October thirty first. And it they and they coincide with the expanding learning opportunities grant plan that we passed and the S R three plan that we passed. Does that make sense? I know it's it's a lot. And those are the kind of questions I know are important. And that's why we do this. And I hope I'm I'm clearly giving you the information you need. I can follow up with any information you need.
Yeah, I want I'm gonna need to like follow up with you later. And then but looking at this, for example, and I don't want to monopolize the 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 time here, but looking at, let's stay with the same sort of sample here, books and supplies, right? And outlay. You have eight point six million, you know, for this year. And then for twenty two, twenty three, it it, you know, you cut it by half to four points eight. And so is the subsequent year. So I mean, that's a huge difference, right? I mean.
Yeah. So again, we're seeing those one-year grants that we have revenues for drop off. As you can see, we're also reducing, you know, our remaining revenues by about six million a little over six million as well. So we see these one-time grants fall off our books as moving forward into the future years along with the expenditures.
And then the other thing I want to say, I know it's very difficult to to budget, right? Because there it's all based on assumptions, right? So and 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 I get that, right? So it's just that, you know, seeing a delta of 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 that amount, it's a bit alarming to to me, right?
Right.
And and but I get it, you know, I understand that this is, you know, it's it's a projection and it's in space and a lot of assumptions. And but it's just the difference was quite big for me. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I also add to that, Director Flores? Because I think so. Excuse me, answer another part of your question that was indirectly answered. But about the the S R funds, right? And and reallocation of of those. So I think it's important. Uh, of those, so I think it's important to note on here that the twenty million here in revenue. And the twenty million here in expenditures, because all those expenditures haven't been totally identified or been moved into place. That could impact books and supplies next year, where it's again at eight million dollars or four million dollars of that goes to supplies. Right, so those.
That is, that is the same type of rational thinking of what happened, yeah.
So, so that, those will be discussed, carry on as, as we and staff bring forward. Uh, plans, uh, in carrying out plans that were adopted, where this money will move from I unidentified. Into identified sources, whether that be um salary and benefits uh for, for something that we will spend money on. Uh, and or books and supplies or, or other services based on this dollar amount will continue to go down. Uh, and then be allocated appropriately to the um, the, the expenditure that it fits into. And, and we saw that on a previous slide when we talked about uh M T S S uh counselors, right? Being moved into S R funds as part of the fiscal stabilization plan, so if that would not have been on that list. Salary and benefits may have been, would have been the same, but it wouldn't have been allocated the same in terms of uh identified expenditures. Uh, and revenue would have been that much higher.
So. My understanding is that books and supplies is cyclical, right, so I mean, and, and we're expecting, and, and these are expected expenditures, right? So, uh, there, there shouldn't be a surprise to, to any of us, so, um, uh, I just. You know, would, would like to know a little bit more about that, to make sure that, you know, in the next following year, if it's science, it's, if it's math, if it's E L A, you know. Uh, that the, these sort of things are expected to come in year after year, and, and they don't come in as a, as a surprise. And then, um, tha- thank you, thank you, I'll reserve my last question for later on.
And, and I'll, I'll just add to that, Director Flores, books and supplies would capture much more than just the cyclical thing, right? It would, uh, you know, uh.
Yeah, we had. Some around, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on to the multi-year projection, so every financial report is required to have current year, but plus. Uh, projection for two future years, so again, we're looking at the general fund summary. Again, starting with revenues, you can see, uh. L C F revenues, we're seeing some declining enrollment. But we're also seeing some increase in COLA and. Hold harmless as well, so one thing about twenty one, twenty two is we're held harmless back to. Is it two thousand eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty, so when we move into twenty two, twenty three, we're actually in a. Fall down according to the current year. Uh, next year for hold harmless, again, we, we, we did. Project the California Legislative Analyst Office revised projections for COLA, and we show those amounts here broken out. Like Rick said, we're eager for the January Governor's Budget Proposal to see how revenues come out for us. Um, remaining revenues, again, those are a significant contributor to the change, and that is. Um, federal grants dropping off, they're, are, aren't continuing. Throughout uh twenty two, twenty three, and expenditures, again, we've got. We've settled with uh our S R T A, um, those figures are in these salaries and benefits. In uh salaries as well as benefits, um, we've got the STIRS and PERS increases that Rick mentioned in the M Y P. And then books and supplies, just like we went over, we're gonna see some drop offs from prior year grant revenues, but. And there's, I would say, the ongoing currents. Costs for books and supplies are in that four point eight million, um, service and operating expenditures, again, we see some prior. Uh, expenses drop off, and we do see some increases in services expenditures uh. As well, but these are our future year projections, um, other outgoing indirect costs, so those are carried forward every year. Those are our, um, they reduce our. General fund unrestricted budgets by we're able to charge restricted programs, indirect costs for overhead. That isn't charged directly to those grants. Um, then you see, again, we went over the, we have future federal covid pandemic grants, so some of this is in the SO three grant plan. And the E L O, E log grant plan, but some of those were approved, but they're also living documents. So we'll continue refining and, and uh identify those budgets. Then, again, we saw the fiscal stabilization measures, uh, these are the fiscal stabilization measures for only expenditures. That are in twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four, if they were in twenty one, twenty two, they're in the identified budget items. And the revenue we broke out up top, so that is the five and ten and ten, but it's structured this way just to show those. Uh, parts in the, in the expenditures in twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four. With all that said, we still have some unidentified measures we have to work on, and like Rick said. You know, that we're excited for January's Governor's Budget to see how that'll affect this. And we'll be working with the Budget Advisory Committee, and that's our charge to find these unidentified, unidentified measures for first, for second interim. Um, but this is where we're at, at first interim, and this, uh, these measures is why we are. Included a self-certification of qualified for this first interim, and then you can see as we move on. We are, again. We show a current increase, decrease in fund balance of about twelve million, twelve million. About ten million of that is unrestricted, so we need to refine that, we're able to draw down on our reserves to make it through the. Three years, but with the measures that uh we identified, we need to move from about ten million to about nine point eight million. To about one point eight million in, um. In uh decrease in fund balance uh to ma- to maintain our three percent. Through the third year, and that's what we're working on, uh, with the Budget Advisor Committee, and you can see the ending balance, and I don't know, can you see the ending balance? Down there, Rick, can you slide that down a little bit? Or is that just my computer?
We can see it.
Okay, so, so if you go on, so, so if you go on to the next slide. Okay, so here's the components of those ending balances, so six point four in twenty one, twenty two is restricted. And then. About five point five is our reserve for economic uncertainty, the other can. Contributing factors, we have our fund seventeen, which we, which we've identified that. For our, to contribute towards our three percent reserve for unres- reserve for economic uncertainties, so at the end of the day. We have our unassigned and appropriate ending balance of nine point two million, and that was due to the prior year unadded actuals. And also the, the measures we implemented in twenty one, twenty two to get us to nine point two million dollars. And then as we showed with the, um. Drawing down our reserves in that deficit, we are looking at the measures ending us at our three percent minimum for economic reserve. In the two future years. So this is just a recap on the one-time federal and state stimulus funds, so again, just. Because they have impacted the budget, just like where, in some of the areas where you are, you are identifying. Trustee Flores, I, I just wanna quickly touch on these. Um, the E log grant that we approved, S three grant that we approved. We've now moved about four point three million of this funding, of the state funding into the restricted reserve. We've moved, and then we still identify about a little over twenty million in our federal future years that, that. That are allocated, but the federal grants are earned when spent, so we'll show those in future years. And if, if we spend them down this year, they'll move into this year. So that is the current status of our federal and state stimulus funds. So now moving on to other funds, so. We ha- again, we started, when we closed the books last year, we, or we opened up, we had to include in our, on our actual report. Our student activity special revenue fund, so that is just saying, here's our A S B funds. We're just gonna show a balance for those, so we move that into our financial reports, and it's about eight hundred and thirty thousand. Then we have our charter school funds, so charter school funds. They, they had uh some, some enrollment that didn't come through, so we reduced their L C F ever revi- L C F F revenue. Some of them had some items that they invested in their L cap, but, and we also. When did we do that? Oh, no, so, so the charter schools are something we need to monitor, um. And that's, that kind of states it in the uh, um, things to, I, things to monitor in one of the next slides, but, but, um. Their finances with the increases they experienced too, they, they had the same increase to some of their underrepresented employees, they had some of the impacts, so, so tho- those. Were updated, our fund twelve is our um state preschool fund where we have, uh, we get grant money from the state. And uh preschoolers that qualify, um, based on their income are placed in that program. So that ending reserve hasn't changed much, we have our fund thirteen, so our cafeteria fund. What's happening with our fund thirty, why do we have six hundred and sixty five thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars? We just got that, that restricted, that money for, um. Equipment, we, we talked about that, uh, at, I think, the forty five day budget update. That the equipment grant or the equipment grant came in, so that's what that is, that's a restricted reserve. The actual um cafeteria fund is still projected to meet a zero. Basic uh reserve for their funds, so we're gonna have to monitor them, because this year they're getting uh. Revenues uh to cover, um, free. Food, but we have to monitor the expenditures and make sure what we get on those revenues, we're, 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 we are still monitoring those budgets, and we'll have an update with that. On second intro, um, our deferred maintenance fund fourteen, um, that changed a little bit. Uh, we spent some money, um, a little more money out of that, that, uh, Eric Odin, our maintenance director, he, he did a little bit of. Uh, deferred maintenance fund, so that was updated, um, we have a special reserve, uh, fund seventeen. You know, we, we budgeted some revenues, and I mean, some interest, this means, but that, but that ended up. At uh, by, you know, about three thousand dollars lower than, than we had originally budgeted. Then our building fund bond, uh, fund, uh, twenty one, again, they have updated all their projects, they're working on. Uh, projects, so we've updated that ending reserve at the end of, uh, all these numbers are forecasted of how we'll end. Revenues versus expenditures, plus prior year, uh, beginning, ending balances, so current year, beginning balances, so these are ending as of. June thirty, two thousand twenty two. Again, uh, capital facilities fund twenty five development fees, we had a huge project, there was a multi-unit project that came in and. It, we updated those revenues to about, uh, almost a million dollars. Then fund forty, we had. Some R D A residential, um, money come in for that from prior year, and we had, um. Some money for our, uh, prop, I think we're still continuing, uh, prop thirty. Is it prop thirty or prop thirty one, special energy reserve, so we're planning that budget, but the updated budget shows about a one point five million dollar increase in any reserve there. Then, um. Then our dental fund, so we took some more, a little more money out of our dental fund sixty seven towards, uh, included in that fiscal stabilization plan. And updated some of those projections, so that is all the other funds ending condition with first interim as well.
Thank you, Joel, uh, so with that, uh, as we close out the presentation, uh, and then open for questions. Uh, just some areas to monitor, I'm not going to read these, uh, line for line. Uh, but no, there's still, uh, a, a lot of uncertainty even with funding, uh, as we, uh, mentioned. Both Joe and I about, uh, our, our eagerness for January tenth. Uh, to see what the governor, uh, proposes, uh, but monitoring, uh, our schools and the enrollment. Uh, monitoring declining enrollment, uh, along with, uh, the continued, um, work that we're doing. Uh, around COVID nineteen, uh, in the coronavirus, uh, as we go through, uh, the winter and spring, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, so as we go through this next steps, uh, the slide, uh, as noted is updated. Uh, for some reason, you got a gray box in May and May revise was in the wrong month. Uh, but this is just showing where we're at heading into January twenty twenty two through June twenty twenty two. Uh, with B A C meetings required financial reports. Um, the May revise, uh, with ultimately the adoption of the twenty two, twenty three budget. Uh, with that, I will hand it back over to President Sheffield.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Edson, Executive Director Dantos, um. You know, one thing I, I will say, you know, along with the funding uncertainty, um, something that really does stand out, and it's something that. I know we're all definitely taking note of is our declining enrollment trend. And whether it's a product of the fires or, um, just outmigration, um, cost of living in the Bay Area and in California. Um, or just as a result of the pandemic, uh, all of the above. Um, this is certainly alarming and, um, not just happening in our district, um, but across the state and nationally. Um, and I, I, I bring this up just because I, I heard a report today on N P R about declining enrollment in public schools. Um, ju- as a phenomenon that, that is happening across the nation, and, and as I said before, it's definitely something that we're all taking note of. Um, so I, um, do we have, um, additional questions from the board? I see Director, uh, Flores, um, hand raised.
Um, yes, thank you, President, um, Sheffield. That was, you know, one of my concerns, that declining enrollment and, um. And, and this is just a rhetorical sort of question, uh, for the superintendent, I think, I mean, it's mostly what's, what's sort of systemic or what sort of system, so we're putting in place. To, to, um, to make sure that we keep, uh, more of our students, um, because I, I'm seeing, you know, some of our students going to, they were in districts. Where some other charter schools, uh, and then in terms of, of, of that, uh, you know, I, I know we received quite a few. Um, emails about the French Charter, uh, becoming a middle school, right, uh, increasing six, um, for seventh and eighth grade. Uh, will that help in, in that all, at all, in, in terms of the solvency, as I heard, a lot of the families are thinking of going to a, a different district. Um, before they, they go to our high school district, so, um. You know, ha- ha- we thought about that, and, and will that make a difference in, in, in terms of the solvency issue, at, at least at the French Charter? Not necessarily at the, uh, charter for the arts, and can anyone answer that?
Oh, um, thank you, Director Flores, so to the first question, um, I think I'll start by sharing. That when we saw initial projections towards the beginning of this calendar year. Um, our, um, declining enrollment seemed a bit, uh, more drastic than actually our actuals. Um, for this school year, which is actually very encouraging, um, we expected, and I don't recall, uh, Mr. Edson. How many we were projecting to be, um, as far as in declining enrollment, but, um, we're actually, we have. A smaller percentage, um, than we were expecting, and we actually had more students, um. Enroll in our district from other places, so which has assisted us in, um, I believe having sort of flat enrollment to a degree. Uh, with a slight decline, um, and that's why our projection is actually smaller than what it could be for future year. And that's why our projection is actually smaller than what it could be for future years. Um, we are doing everything we can uh as far as um getting our name out there and um being visible in multiple spaces, social media, various media outlets, and we're on the uh K V V F radio every other week to try and promote the programs and services that we provide and supports uh that we provide. Um, and we are looking at other ways, because with more students, we also need to ensure we have the appropriate number of staff uh if we're going to grow, and so that goes hand in hand with recruitment and the efforts that we are making. Um. So, you know, of course, as President Sheffield mentioned, there are multiple factors that are really out of our control at the same time that are leading some of our families away from the area that are more around a fiscal impact to them personally um than it is their choice of school, but certainly we are looking at every avenue to try and continue to attract and retain students that we do have. Um, and then to your, I'm sorry, your second question.
Uh, was adding at the seventh and eighth grade to.
Um, yes, um, there is, there is actually an information item that we'll be bringing forward to address that. So I I don't want to give too much information right now as we're right in the throes of that data collection process.
And um one more question, and what sort of impact will Ferb uh Ridge have in terms of our budget? Because I think it's it's restricted, if I remember correctly, and I haven't heard anything of a Ford Ridge in a long time. And I'd like to hear more about where we are in in terms of um that land. Um, you know, uh and and the programs that we're thinking of doing, uh but will that have any sort of effect on the budget?
I'll defer to Mr. Edson, but I do know that that is a projected board item um coming to the board, and so I don't know how much we should share now um versus wait for a more comprehensive response.
Uh, then, uh, will it affect our our budget at all? Or would it be restricted?
I'll I'll take this. Um, it it generally will not impact our budget. Um, at the last board meeting, um, we approved the contract for uh our agent uh for for Ridge uh that money uh when that land sells uh will then be uh put towards one of the uses as specified in the agreement with the city uh around um or potentially a employee home loan program or or some other uh off skirt for uh affordable housing help. Uh, but that money would uh not impact Fund Zero One.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Um, Trustee Medina.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to kind of add on the issue of um declining enrollment. Um, I I I think it's important, well, at least from my perspective, that one of the things that we've been doing around pushing for just consolidation to me is part of addressing this back and forth of students and the more efficient use of funds within our city. And so I think that that we really need to start maybe planning and focusing to see what what's up next in terms of the difficult consolidation, what's going on at the county superintendent level, but start to plan for starting to create that narrative and gain support from our community, because it it's an issue that there will always be resistance to, always be resistance to change. And I think starting to develop arguments for why that could be a positive thing, how it could be better for the the students and the families of our community. Um, and I think it'll it'll have an a positive impact on our budget if that's something that is to to happen, we can get the community to to uh support us in that.
Thank you, Director Medina. This is an action item. Are there um uh any further discussion from the board?
I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Twenty of the twenty 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 one, twenty twenty two first interim uh budget report.
Great. So moved by Director um Medina, seconded by Vice President McCormick, motion for approval at twenty twenty one, twenty two first interim report with qualified certification. Take a vote.
Director Beard. Hi. Director Medina.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Marietti.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Fang.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, motion carries. And that brings us to the end of our agenda, I believe. Um, so thank you all. Thank you, um, Joel and Rick, um, again, for final presentation. Um, giving us an update. Uh, I know there were a lot of questions, and um there will be more questions coming coming um in January as well as we start following up on on some of these items. Um, so uh let's see, board members, thank you all for this meeting. Um, we are headed into a break. So um just a reminder for everybody to stay healthy, stay safe, um keep those kids' minds active. Um, and I'm going to ask um Superintendent Trunell if she has anything to end on.
Thank you, President Sheffield. I just want to thank Deputy Superintendent Edson and Executive Director Dantos for their work on this report. Um, certainly, uh more information to come as we continue on this journey, and certainly a lot to consider. Uh, I just want to take a moment to wish everyone a healthy, happy, fun, and safe winter break. Um, and look forward to reconnecting with everyone in two thousand twenty two.
All right. I don't know, um, i- if, you know, this this being our 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 final meeting of two thousand twenty one, I want to do a screenshot of all of us, all of our smiling faces. Um, put put some of you on the spot. Um, but you guys can hold tight for one second. Um. All right, make yourselves presentable. Ready? Smile. Smile, Lori, look up. All right, thank you all. Have a good night, and um, yeah, we'll we'll see each other in the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.